Resources, Lesley Ellis, who will introduce all our guests and our topics today. Lesley, thank you, and happy Monday.
Okay, likewise, good afternoon, commissioners, and we do have two topics on the agenda today, and then some updates from both Rebecca Everett and myself. I should say I'm Lesley Ellis, Community Planning Infrastructure and Resources Director, and so we are very thankful to have guests with us today for our first topic, which is an update on the University of Denver Mountain Campus. And then our second topic is the Weed District updates from Casey Cisneros and team. And so I will go ahead and hand it off to Stuart Hulse, who's the Vice Associate Vice Chancellor from the University of Denver, and I know has attended some of the community conversations and been with you before, and he'll update you on what's happening with the Mountain Campus. And we should have slides and ready to go. So, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Lesley, and thank you, everyone, for welcoming us to the Larimer County Board of County Commissioners meeting. I thought I'd do a quick overview of kind of, and a very fast overview in some ways, of what's been going on and what's been happening at the Kennedy Mountain Campus, and kind of what we've been working on as we move forward. I do want to first reflect that Stephanie O'Malley apologizes for not being able to attend today, she's under the weather, and so I'll be representing the University of Denver on this update. You know, people often ask us why the Kennedy Mountain Campus, and I think the University of Denver, we really blend that with our focus on what we call the 4D experience for students. And so we're really trying to focus on a holistic student. And where the Kennedy Mountain Campus kind of fits in is really two key areas for us. One is promoting well-being and the wellness of students, and the second is really what we call exploring character and really developing character within students. And so, a lot of people have asked, why did the University of Denver acquire a Mountain Campus? It really fits into that space for us in really looking at the holistic student. I'm not going to go into a ton of detail, and I'm sure this can be shared afterwards, but really, we do that by signature experiences, really mentorship and coaching of our students, and then really what we believe in as reflection for students, and really developing that skill set as we move forward. And so, you know, we're, as a university, we're renowned for things like we have high engagement in study abroad. This past year, we had about sixty percent of our first-year students attend the Kennedy Mountain Campus, just to give a sense of where that was, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Our goal is eventually to service all of our DU students, and so that's a little north of thirteen thousand students, not all at one time, over really the course of a four-year period, and rotating them through. This past year, in totality of an academic year, we had about thirteen hundred total students attend the Kennedy Mountain Campus to have experiences there. You know, obviously, as you all well know, the landscape and the beauty and nature and the environment is a critical part, it's what we believe in, and very contrasting from the urban experience that we provide in Denver. And so we're really trying to develop experiences for students that are not only central to being in a city and in that type of environment, but also taking advantage of the Rocky Mountains and where we exist. These are our vision and guiding principles, I'm not going to run through every one of these, these can be read at a later date, but we are focused on getting all students up there. We really focus in a co-curricular manner, not always in the academic space, but in the co-curricular manner of what we're doing, and really, you know, we're really employing faculty and staff to be with students and really mentor them in there. We're working hard to make our campus inclusive of our entire community, and so some of that work was done, and I'll touch on that in a little bit. And then really, this is not a tuition-supported operation, really this is funded through philanthropy, through revenue-generating opportunities futuristically, and then what we call fee-based internal use, so that could be departments coming up utilizing that facility to be able to do that. And then, we obviously, it's named the Kennedy Mountain Campus, Jim Kennedy is one of our lead donors on the property, very high conservation mindset, and obviously we take that ethos with us, where we really think about, anything that we would think about on the campus is more minimalist, but with a high-quality mindset as we move forward. We did do some Phase One work, and that's been completed, and so a lot of that work pre-existed with the Girl Scouts of Colorado, it was obviously a Girl Scouts camp prior. Obviously, a lot of those facilities didn't translate to college students, so a lot of the work that we focused on was transitioning those facilities to be able to serve as college students and adults as we did that, and this is kind of a timeline of the work that we did through there. I'll just show a couple of quick snapshots, so kind of we have six cabins on the property, what we reference as community cabins, they house twenty-four to thirty-two individuals at a given time, and so we did significant updates within these to obviously host students. They are still a bunk bed infrastructure, very communal-based, and obviously building camaraderie with students as we work through there. We transitioned what were formerly seasonal cabins to, we reference what we call homestead cabins, it's a reference to kind of a historical component of the campus, and these are more kind of for semi-private, small areas that really our faculty and staff can house in that support many of the programs that occur. We obviously have a dining hall and an activity center, those were in place previously with the Girl Scouts, obviously we revamped those to really, obviously just, I mean, not a huge revamp, but just touched up what needed work to be done to make them functional. So our dining facility can, our largest group that we've had to date has been about a hundred and eighty, so it can feed probably about two-twenty from an adult perspective, and then our activities center can support similar numbers. And the last part, you know, which we get a lot of questions about, and it was a big discussion, was we did upgrade technology to the Kennedy Mountain Campus. We do have a desire to obviously conduct academic research up at the Kennedy Mountain Campus and think through that, offer different academic experiences up there, which does require technology. But we've built the technology in such a way that we can kind of turn it on and off, for lack of a better term. We believe students being disconnected from technology is pretty important also during those experiences, so we've tried to blend the opportunity of both of doing that to really provide a robust experience up there, but there was significant work done on the technology aspect of what we have done up there. The first-year program that I referenced is called First Descent, really is a three-day, two-night program that is open to all of our first-year students. Really, it is built around outdoor experiences and an introduction to the 4D experience and how they can maximize their education at the University of Denver while they're here. We did partner with a number of local businesses on First Descent, which I think it's, you know, we've worked hard to be part of the overall community and engage in that, but there was an opportunity with Sundance Trail right across the street, Beaver Meadows in the winter, that we partnered with those properties to provide different experiences. With Sundance, it's the equestrian experience, with Beaver Meadows, it was more ice fishing, some snowshoeing, some different things that we couldn't offer on the campus at the time. A secondary program that we're kind of building in behind First Descent is what we reference as our outdoor experience program, and so this is where students would have obviously outdoor experiences. We're trying to develop students through outdoor experiences and really kind of put them in those situations. Our focus this past year was really building that team and laying a foundation, and the first foundation we look at is things like Wilderness First Aid, Wilderness First Responder courses, so we offer those at the campus. We have certainly also heard from the community that we'd like to extend those to the community, and that's our plan as we move forward, is those courses would be extended, not only will they serve students, faculty, and staff, but they'll also be extended into the community and providers who have interest in getting those certifications will be able to do that. We see certifications in this area as a key opportunity for us to obviously, obviously take both safety and both the education of our students seriously and significantly. And we're trying to back that up also by students can earn academic credit taking those courses. We did offer a number of academic programs, and this past year was kind of more of a pilot. We quite candidly didn't quite know exactly what was going to work and not work, so we piloted a number of experience with our academics. So we worked with our provost office and a number of schools across our university to offer experiences. We had ten different academic programs that we offered, ranging from a final, from an art class doing landscapes on the Kennedy Mountain Campus, to quite directly outdoor leadership programs through our university college. So there was a wide array of programs that were offered. We're working as we move forward, likely to more go to what we call immersive programs with academics, where we would take kind of a week nine of our academic quarters, we're on quarters, not semesters, and really it'll function as a week nine and ten as of course, being up at the Kennedy Mountain Campus, and we hope that will develop into interim opportunities as we move forward. Kind of final programmatically that we piloted and build is really 4D Experience Signature Labs, so, you know, obviously, the Kennedy Mountain Campus, obviously scenic, beautiful, a fantastic place for wellness opportunities, so we have Wellness Lab Experiences, we have a Career and Lives of Purpose Lab, and a Character Development Lab, and these will blend more as we move forward into there. And then, we've just hosted other DU-affiliated items, just to give context, so obviously Board of Trustees Tours, we've done our Chancellor's Cabinet Team Building Retreat, we'll do that again here in August, we've done involvement with our alumni, where we're pairing faculty in a particular nature topic and pairing it with our alumni and doing some hiking tours and other pieces. So we're continuing to explore and other pieces so we're continuing to explore what other programs can work with DU the other thing I would share is obviously we've worked closely with the Red Feather Lakes community it started really I was hired in May of twenty twenty-two to work with Kennedy Mountain Campus property I had served at DU twenty-three years previous to that so I'm very familiar with DU but stepped into our role we hosted an open house in June twenty twenty-two and we've really worked collaboratively with a number of organizations to try and make the campus available we obviously surveyed a number of residents as far as interests what they were looking for in relationship with the University of Denver Kennedy Mountain Campus we've heard lots of different things I think you know one of the things that we're constantly trying to work on is you know what are the priorities and how can and how can DU be involved and how should DU be involved in that and we're still working through that piece but we're you know we we share that we want to be a great community partner and we try and make the campus accessible to whether it's the fire chiefs meeting whether it's wildfire coalition meetings or other pieces so we've worked hard to try and become a resource in the Red Feather Lakes community you know we've been asked a little bit about how we're thinking about the campus obviously we decided to take on a master plan process for a longer term so really we hired a firm called Cushing Terrell and we're really in that process right now where we're trying to explore what will the campus look like in the long term how how would we think about the campus and what we would do I would just point out a few critical pieces that we've put in one is obviously going back to Mr. Kennedy sustainability and carbon neutrality are critical as we think about that so we've got a lot of thoughts that we're gathering around those pieces obviously our chancellor signed the climate pledge and we're committed to carbon neutrality as an institution and so this forms kind of a significant area we heard from students that they want to be outdoors not indoors when they're at the Kennedy Mountain Campus so really thinking about what are the outdoor activity infrastructure and things so we think about trail development and what I mean by that is when we inherited the Girl Scouts property there was pre-existing trails but they just hadn't been maintained and so rethinking about what that trail system could look like we're exploring some activity options such as like a via ferrata and seeing if that's feasible we want to integrate students with nature and so that's more of like a climbing and ropes experience but in nature rather than being on a challenge course structure or those types of pieces so we're really trying to think about how we address the outdoor outdoor activity options and then of course emergency and safety we heard loud and clear from day one of arriving at the property about how important safety and emergency responses and those types of things are and obviously we're thinking about those things carefully I just put up here and these are all concepts so I'm you know I'm not saying this is what we're exactly going to do but there are considerations as far as how we think about you know fire and evacuation and is there a substation opportunity with the Kennedy Mountain Campus and some of those types of pieces those are all opportunities that we're currently exploring our timeline on master plan just to share is really we're March twenty-three through September twenty-three we really get a draft report it has to go through our university leadership approval Board of Trustee approval identify priorities as I mentioned early on everything that we fund is either through philanthropy or through auxiliary revenue generation and then really we would have to go to a design planning phase which we're obviously a ways away from at this point kind of our future activity just to share where we're going is I've kind of referenced some of these but this gives an idea of some of the future activity that we'll be looking to bring on at the Kennedy Mountain Campus as we move forward and really that's a quick summary of the Kennedy Mountain so more than happy for any questions or anything that I can add
Thank you so much for that presentation and I really did enjoy being at your open house that day it was a really fun community event and I appreciate all the the way that you engaged the community that day colleagues do you have any questions Commissioner Stevens
Yeah thank you for the presentation appreciate seeing kind of what you're doing I was unable to attend the open house so it's it's good to have a little window into the work that you're doing up at the campus so just a couple of questions do you have plans for expanding beyond the cabins that you spoke about or are you going to kind of stay at that
I think I think we've identified potentially some so we have on our lower area of our campus there's a pre-existing lodge and there's some smaller cabins that pre-existed from our understanding from when a veterinarian was there prior to Girl Scouts and so I think there's some things that we would think about down there that we would probably add I think we're our biggest challenge as we get to the larger groups is not just the serving of students but it's accommodating staff to be able to do that and so that's where our thought process would go with some of those pieces
Yeah I just wondered as you try to get thirteen thousand students up there one hundred and eighty at a time that's a process
Well we're trying to we've kind of done the math a little bit where if we believe we maximize our opportunities we would obviously be thinking that over a four-year cycle right so not every student is up there in a one-year cycle and really how do we layer in those experiences we're we're trying to build traditions for the university so an incoming and potentially an outgoing experience and how do we layer that in we see a lot of our students study abroad in their junior year so they miss a big part of their junior year so how we strategically place those opportunities become important we probably do envision expanding into the summer where we traditionally don't have an academic quarter but really using the summer to serve students also
Great thank you and then a couple of other questions so and Commissioner Kofalas may be able to answer this better because he does a lot of work in Red Feather but when I think about how DU can be involved in the community and you know it's a question and I suppose you're here for our input as well as to educate us so I think about and I was glad to see the list of things that you've already done it looks like you had interacted with maybe the food pantry and and things up there certainly you know any philanthropic work I mean it is a small community and sometimes struggles financially as you're probably aware that we have folks that are trying to build community up there but there are some challenges you know with childcare and food insecurity and some other things so obviously anyways you can help with that I think of opportunities I think you have a business school on your campus
We do
Okay I think about opportunities for you know I think that area also struggles with how to get tourism how to you know support the businesses up there we're certainly working on this restrooms that are maybe on the main street that are a little bit better than sort of the porta potties that are there now and and stuff and so you know I guess I think that they're and then I think about the school the elementary school up there where you know their kids up there might not be as exposed like kids in Fort Collins or Loveland where they're closer to a university system so how can we expose you know young people to a little bit of university life so I think that there there may be ways and like I said Commissioner Kofalas may have better better suggestions but I certainly think there is the opportunity I mean obviously you want as a space for your students to grow and and have those outdoor experiences but in turn giving back I think would be really great for a community that can sometimes struggle with their identity and how they how they can grow so I think I would welcome you to be a part of that and would really like to see that and I think the students could grow from that too as well I think about you know there are a lot of places around the US rural communities that are struggling and there there are federal dollars that can help with that there's all kinds of things but you know I think making the connection with some of your students who have some expertise and want that experience with some of the people who could benefit from that and would like to probably really enjoy that interaction as well so
Yeah I I would I first of all thank you very much for the feedback and we're we like I shared we we want to be part of the community I think you know we've we've listened a lot and we've certainly been asked I think the things that are going to work well I think what you started to allude to things that we could put more into a project right that have longer term there's a lot of times we get asked for can students help in out in the community in the weekend doesn't necessarily work with the programming that we're doing but we can bring other aspects of what we do like a business school or other pieces when it's a more project-based approach and consideration of those things so I think both we're learning and the community's learning and how do we kind of pull together to best utilize those resources and where those things go
Yeah I mean I could definitely see you know I think about transportation needs there too medical needs there's a lot of needs that that they have in that community that aren't being met and so it could be a really great partnership between the county and the the community and DU so you know we would welcome any suggestions you have and I think it would be great for young people to work on you know problems that people are facing right I mean this is there's here's some real life problems that you can help us figure out how to solve
Yep
Thank you Commissioner Commissioner Kofalas any comments or questions
Yes I have a question then a comment mostly in expression of appreciation well entirely in expression of appreciation my my question is could you talk a little bit about the community advisory group that's been formed and perhaps what is the one key takeaway that you have DU Mountain Campus has received you know based on the up to you know the deliberations there
So thank you I think yes one of our we have formed kind of a community advisory panel around the Kennedy Mountain Campus which predominantly is made up of obviously neighborhood surrounding the Kennedy Mountain Campus I think my biggest takeaway was I think there was a lot of unknowns and I think we've tried to solve that by you know I'm always available if I can offer anybody a tour or show the property or what we're doing I think there was a lot of apprehension of you know traffic coming to the campus or thirteen thousand when we talk about thirteen thousand students the mindset instantly goes it's thirteen thousand students at one time it's not those really our largest group size is one hundred and eighty and so I think you know we've really worked to really listen try and open the doors as much as we can to show our neighbors what's happening and what's going on I would say the takeaway more is to some of what we shared is can we get our students more into the community and into those things from a impact standpoint and those types of things and we're trying to trying to think about that we'll we'll go through iterations of our programming and you know there's version one when you're opening the doors and you kind of like figuring it out and then there'll be version two three four and five and I think we can be more mindful with some of those pieces as we move forward you know we certainly heard information on wanting access to different education we certainly heard on the Wilderness First Aid and the Wilderness First Responder courses that there was interest in that and so we're trying to start to open some of those things up and share those pieces we've certainly heard from our neighbors next door about interest in emergency egress for both the Red Feather Highlands community and also quite candidly for the Kennedy Mountain Campus and is there an opportunity to work together on how we think about those things and what we do so I think there's a lot of great feedback and input that we're getting from that advisory group and we're learning how we be part of the community as we move forward
Thank you Stu thank you for your thoughtful response and by way of expression of appreciation I I think since you folks have arrived and through various means you've attempted to establish those relationships and I think you've kept an open mind your your institution has kept an open mind about potential partnerships in the future on some of the community needs that we've identified so thank you for that and one final thing is that August nineteenth which is a Saturday Livermore is having their annual festival and that might be you know you could check with Leslie or someone there may be an opportunity if some folks can attend that to understand the Livermore community which is part of that regional community thank you
Thank you
Thank you Commissioners I want to probably be repetitive but want to echo our appreciation I I've since worked there for the open house and I just all the bond of work you had done just to be ready for the open house with the roads and everything it was quite impressive and certainly I noticed from a fire mitigation standpoint you guys had done extensive work and so I was really impressed with that I was also just really thrilled to hear about kind of this character and leadership development and kind of this immersive kind of program you're having and I think that's really awesome and and again I echo Commissioner Stevens even trying to do that leadership development for those elementary students or those you know older students and and there's a lot of older adults up there that maybe just would love to engage just because isolation is an issue for our older adults so I think that's a really important thing and that might correlate to some of your programming I think it's you so I mean DU excuse me sorry I've got kids at other schools but I have friends and I have friends and extended family that live up in that area and Red Feather Lakes and Crystal Lakes and Glacier View and all that so it's I've been hearing a lot of things my question is and please know that we are so grateful for you being in Limer County and the partnerships that you're building because it is part of that Limer way of collaboration and partnerships but I heard some talk about maybe you having some maybe industrial stuff like maybe a pellet making area or kind of a something with woody biomass or doing some kind of work in that area maybe cross lamination as you know that's a big thing now especially in Denver a lot of buildings and is any of that going on or some future plans for that with some of the the woody biomass challenges we have because I also could see that as an area of partnerships so
I think so there is there is nothing going on currently that way that was a meeting that we had obviously related to you know removal of slash and other wildfire mitigation strategies there were a couple of great examples in the country CSU is one of them where the structure like that Oregon State is another I think you know we've certainly as part of the master planning effort that we've been undertaking certainly you know we certainly have an eye towards the community and thinking about what are those pieces but it's very much been at the idea phase to see if you know what would it take I mean there's multiple factors that go into that we're learning still a lot ourselves about that but I think our goal is to kind of keep the dialogue going if there is a a community need and there's the right partners and there's the right opportunity I think those are always things we're willing to explore and align with that so it's really been a conversation of exploration at this point and and not more than that
And that's probably why some of those folks that call you know I talked to up there I was at the Glacier View event but I you know sometimes I'm up there visiting friends and family and they were talking about I I think that's a really good sign though that they're going to your meetings and coming away with some kind of information and really excited they seemed very excited about the things you're doing and I thought that was a really great sign and so I I appreciate that that they were it was like oh do you hear what DU is doing and they're doing this we gotta see this they came talked about this it was exciting to hear so
Yeah and I think the collaboration I think you know as as you all well know right in a community the more partners that can be engaged and if there are whether it's grant opportunities or I mean I think just that massive the ability to be engaged as partners sends a very clear message and I think DU is certainly wants to be at that table and and will work hard to kind of find the right opportunities in that community
Wonderful well I might take you up on the offer to come and take another tour just to see because I'm sure things have changed and looked different and would love to maybe reach out and and schedule that because I I can coordinate with checking in on my friends and see how their flooring is going on in their cabin so
All right
Lorraine did you have anything you'd like to add
No I think this is a great update we really appreciate it there are a lot of things we've been hearing from a lot of different places and hearing it directly from you is wonderful I think it'd be great to a year from now maybe do this again and see what you've done and what your plans are at that point
Yeah happy to do it and thank you all once again and I would just share always be willing to share my information whether it's with community partners neighbors other things we're always willing to open our doors and share what's happening on the Kennedy Mountain Campus so thank you very much
Thank you for being here today we really appreciate both of you being here and and getting to have this dialogue but appreciate your time so much thank you
Thank you
Okay on to the next item Leslie I think this is a celebration or not a celebration but senior extension of the Weed District
Yes so just we just need probably a moment to transition here and Casey and Megan will join us
And if you need to unplug do you need to unplug the slides or anything like that or
Leslie
Oh cool awesome yeah well thank you all for your time today
Thank you
Thank you Okay wow I'll let you introduce these familiar smiling faces
They are familiar faces right so we have Casey Cisneros here today and Megan Flonakin from our Department of Natural Resources
And we're here today to share with you a little bit about the extension needed of the county weed district. It's currently set to terminate at the end of this year, so December 31st, 2023. It was last extended in December 31st of 2018 for a five-year period. And so this is something we've done consistently, generally on a five-year interval as that termination period has come up every five years. And as you know, the weed district was established in 1967. It includes roughly the southeastern 20% of Laramore County. So it doesn't occupy the whole county. And I think Casey passed out a map. We're hoping to see if it'll come up on the screen as well. And to, by statute, to extend the weed district, it does require a commissioner hearing. And so if you are in agreement at the end of this today, we'll go ahead and work with community development to schedule that for one of your regular scheduled hearing dates with 30 days' notice. So with that, I'll hand it over to Casey to just give you a little background and some of the things we do within the weed district and why it's so important.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you. I'm Casey Cisneros. I'm the land stewardship manager with the Department of Natural Resources. And one of my roles is to oversee the Laramore County Weed District. And so I'm going to give some history on the weed district and then talk about some of the critical services that we provide for the county. As Megan was saying, the Laramore County Weed District was first established in 1967, and it was originally geared towards helping irrigated agriculture, which was a primary driver within the county at that time. And the main weeds of concern was Canada thistle and leafy spurge, which are two very, very deep-rooted perennial plants. And previous to some of the newer integrated weed management tools, that was really difficult to manage in irrigated agriculture. So the county had originally paid for the weed district with general fund until 1985, at which time there was a mill levy that was created. And the mill levies changed over time. Currently, it's a .143 mill. And on my home in Fort Collins, I pay about $5 a year for that service. And what that provides for folks in Laramore County is we will do site visits for small acreage landowners and large, larger landowners in range and pasture settings. We do not work on turf or ornamental within the municipalities. However, we do have a lot of HOAs that'll reach out to us that has green space, that they need additional help managing the vegetation there. We have a cost share program that we offer to those within the weed district. It's 25% of labor and herbicides, up to $1,000 is the maximum. At our office off of East Mulberry, we provide herbicide sales to landowners. And one of the benefits of this program is that we take larger quantities of herbicide and break them down into smaller quantities for those small acreage landowners so that they don't wind up with large jugs of herbicide sitting in their garage for years and years. I also provide presentations within the weed district, and also I'll go outside the weed district to give presentations to other HOAs like Glacier View to talk about integrated weed management throughout the county. We have some printed materials, like the Laramore County Weed Management Guide. We have the Thistles of Colorado, the NAP weeds of Colorado. All of these we also make available for free on our website, as well as these, the infographic for the weed district. It's at laramore.org/weeds. So that's, that's essentially what I've brought before you, and we're, again, requesting an extension to the weed district, which will sunset at the end of 2023.
Thank you, Casey. I appreciate your presentation and providing all the information. Colleagues, do you have any questions? Commissioner Kofalas?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have any questions, but I do want to say I'm in support of scheduling a public hearing in order to take the next step for extending the weed district. And it appears that in this advisory committee petition, you're recommending a 10-year extension. So I'm supportive of scheduling that public hearing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, just, I'm supportive as well, but just, I think for the general public, can you talk about what some of the problems are if we don't deal with the weeds? Like what, what, you know, just remind folks why that's important and why the $5 is, is an important thing for the whole community?
Absolutely. And one of the critical services that I forgot to mention is that this mill levy pays for noxious weed management along county roads within the weed district. And that's important because noxious weeds are recognized by the state of Colorado as being detrimental to the environment, the economy, and human health. And through the Colorado Noxious Weed Act, it is mandated that counties and municipalities both enforce those provisions of that law. And one of the main tenets is that the pub, our public lands, such as right-of-ways, need to be managed before we can enforce or apply compliance on neighboring private lands.
Great, thank you. So when you say it's, it's not good for the environment or the economy, I mean, can you, can you provide a couple of examples of what, what that exactly means?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah. So in our office, we get a lot of calls from private landowners who want to report noxious weeds on their neighbor's property. And what noxious weeds do is it is detrimental to a landowner's management goals on their own property. It's not like a rubbish compliance where it only affects one single parcel. It is something that can move very easily through those roadways or wind or water. And then the neighbors have an issue that they're then dealing with, and they're having to put a lot of resources, such as time and money and effort towards, to meet their land management goals.
Thank you.
As a landowner and dealing with noxious weeds sometimes, especially that darn Myrtle splurge, that, and I wonder, wildlife also tends to help spread some of these noxious weeds as well.
Absolutely. Wildlife and people help move noxious weeds throughout the county. And the noxious weeds can also be detrimental towards habitats for the wildlife, such as on our open spaces, we have a land stewardship crew that goes out and manages all these noxious weeds so that we can enhance the habitat value on these lands.
Yeah, that's a great point. And you certainly have shown us on some of our field trips lately how the biodiversity is so critically important and how much that can make a huge difference. And, and I'm also curious, sometimes these noxious weeds can also impact people's allergies and make things worse in that, in that area, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. About two weeks ago is when all of the pollen from the cosha was released into the air. And although not a noxious weed, it is a very troublesome weed, and I know it, it gives people a lot of allergic reaction.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I do want to just extend my gratitude to both of you. I'm really a big fan of our land stewardship advisory board, just really great group that we have now that are really understanding and caring. And Casey, you are a tremendous asset to the county, your knowledge and your passion and the work that you do and the outstanding tremendous results you've had recently. It's just, words are not enough, the picture to say it all, but it's just tremendous work. And I just wanted to extend my gratitude because I'm not sure we understand how important this work is, especially with climate change and these conditions we have and the spread. And you could spend, I could spend hours and days, you know, pulling all the noxious weeds and cleaning up my property, but if my neighbors don't do that and the wind blows, then I'm the next summer spending that same amount of time out in the heat trying to, you know, keep my property a really habitat kind of hero kind of thing for all this wonderful biodiversity. So my heartfelt gratitude, just want to know how much I value your work, so.
Well, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Commissioner Kofalas?
I have a question, but I'd like to check in with our director regarding time.
We are fine on time.
Thank you, Madam CPIR Director. In the past, we've had conversations with residents regarding the application of herbicides along the roadways and issues related to bees or pollinators or monarchs with milkweed. Could you speak to, Casey, would you speak to what precautions we take perhaps to minimize those kinds of risks and the timing of the herbicide applications, you know, along the roadways and how that might affect milkweed and how that might affect monarch butterflies which need milkweed?
Yeah, absolutely. It comes back to a lot of training that our staff receives on the job, also within different training circles. All of our full-time staff has a pesticide applicator's license, the highest level. It's a qualified supervisor's license through the state, and they're certified through the state of Colorado. We are consistently going to trainings and getting continuing education credits on safety and environmental protection, as well as instructions and ways to apply pesticides in various settings, whether that's a rangeland or a riparian area or a forest. So it, we're consistently learning and trying to, to increase our knowledge base and apply that in the field.
Thank you, Casey. And I also appreciate the engagement with the public regarding the spirited discussions that we had on the county's participation in the restore program, and then the ability to go out and, and see how that's impacting pasture, the cheat grass issue and all of that. So thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Stevens, any other comments? Lorraine, any other things, comments?
I think it's underestimated how important this work is to the community. And chances like this to highlight, however technical they might be, I think are important. So thank you for coming in, providing a little bit of information. Wish we could have made the slides work.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to check, we had one commissioner state that they were supportive of the extension. I am also supportive of your recommendations in this extension in the hearing. Commissioner Stevens, did you want to?
I actually did say I was supportive.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I didn't catch that. So, I didn't catch that. I apologize. So I want to make sure I was clear on mine. So it sounds like you have your, you know, direction, so.
Great, yeah. We'll go ahead and publish a notice in the newspaper and get that hearing set up.
Okay.
If I may, on the lighter side, thanks for reminding us about cosha. And I guess if I were to rate my two favorite invasive species, as you know what would be at the top of the list, but number two would be that one.
Absolutely. Those annuals are quite prolific.
Thank you, Casey and Megan. Appreciate it. Okay, so on to our community director, community development director update. Welcome, Rebecca Everett.
Rebecca Everett, Community Development Director. Have a couple of updates for you. The first is just a little bit of logistical information for our hearing this afternoon. So we have a 3:00 PM land use hearing with two consent items and two discussion items on the agenda. The, one of the consent items is a rezoning that's associated with the Upper Thompson Sanitation District. The other is amended, an amended plat. And then the first discussion item is the short-term rental that was tabled at your last hearing. And we do have a memo in the packet with additional information on fire, fire protection, and responses from the applicant there as well. So we are intending to continue that conversation with you all and answer, answer other questions to help support your decision there. And then the second discussion item is an appeal of a standard that would allow short-term rental to occupy an accessory living area. And on that item, staff's recommending denial. So just want to make sure that, that you're, you're prepared for those items in this afternoon's hearing. We do not anticipate a huge amount of community members joining us for the hearing today. We're, we're prepared in the event that, we have a lot of attendees and can work on hearing procedures and time limits and things like that with you if you would like. But we are not anticipating a lot of attendees at the moment.
Thank you. Any colleagues, any questions? Commissioner Kofalas?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Community Development Director Everett. Regarding the July 10th short-term rental application item that was tabled or continued, appreciate the memo that we received from our wildfire partner program coordinator. It's very helpful. Will she be available if we have further questions or, that's my first question?
Reina Eschleman with our sheriff's office will not be available for the hearing today. We have coordinated with her quite a bit and, and checked in on some questions that we anticipate or that we have had as staff, and we're prepared to provide as much information as we can. But she was not available to attend the hearing this afternoon.
And I had a follow-up question to that, but it kind of slipped my mind at the moment. So I guess I'm okay for now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any, so any other updates?
Yes, so separate topic. I wanted to inform the Commissioners that we did hold a pre-application meeting last week on the Thornton Pipeline project. So we met with Thornton's staff and their team. We had staff from various county departments that were there to help advise on the types of reports and documents that maybe need, need to be submitted for that project. So wanted to let you know that some of those initial steps have happened that moved toward an official formal submittal of the Thornton Pipeline 1041, their, their second 1041 proposal. With that, they are, Thornton is planning to do some outreach, community outreach in August. I believe they're still finalizing some of the dates and locations of those public meetings, but they're planning two public meetings in early to mid-August. And they anticipate submitting an application for their 1041 permit later this fall.
Thank you, Rebecca. I guess we really can't ask questions or comments since it's early promise, so I just want to kind of state that, so. But we can ask about the process. So it sounds like the process is started.
Yes, and I'll, I'll be providing updates along the way on the, the process and community outreach that's happening related to the pipeline. So as, as a new step in the process occurs or is coming up, I will be sure to provide regular updates to all of you so you're aware.
Thank you, Rebecca. Commissioner Kofalas, I see your hands raised.
Thank you, Rebecca. So an actual 1041 application being submitted, we can anticipate that will be later this fall, which means anytime between the fall equinox and the winter solstice, is that correct?
We anticipate September or October at this point.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, after an application is submitted, how long before a hearing would? Yeah, after an application is submitted, how long before a hearing would need to be held? Is there a deadline?
Yeah, so it's somewhat variable depending on whether that application is a complete application upon its initial submittal, but there's a completeness review period that's 30 days long. Okay, I get the time for 60 days. Thank you, Frank. 60 days long for that initial completeness review. Once the county has determined that the application is complete, and there may be back and forth that happens there to make that determination. Once we've determined that it's complete, then we set hearing dates from that point forward. And I'm going to look to Frank again so I'm not confused. Is that, that's 60 days as well to get to the public hearing? So that includes, that's 60 days to get to the Board of County Commissioners. So the planning commission hearing happens less than 60 days from that determination of completeness. So it moves pretty fast once the application is accepted by the county.
But it could be 60, up to 60 days to discover it's complete and then 60 days to the hearing for the Commissioners. So while the application might come in in the fall, the actual hearing might not happen till the spring, like the following year. Early the following year.
That, yes, that's, that is reasonable to assume that it, yeah, it could take several months before it's actually before the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you.
I think it's 60 days. It might be 90.
Sorry, Frank, you have to introduce yourself, sorry.
Frank Haug from the County Attorney's Office. Once the application is deemed complete, then you have a certain, I think it's, it may be 90 days. It's either 60 days or 90 days. And you have to schedule the hearing and there's a kind of a particular noticing process you have to follow. But it's relatively quick.
Commissioner Kofalas.
Yes, thank you. And if my memory serves me correctly, I think the, is it both the planning commission and the Commissioners have some ability to schedule additional hearings based on the level of community interest?
I think you could, but you're still going to have to fit inside that timeframe, unless the applicant waives the timeframe. Because the way that these are set up, once you get an application, there's sort of a, it's kind of one of those, and again, I have to make sure I reread the statute so I'm making sure I'm giving you the right information. But what I think happens is, once they submit the application, you have a certain period of time within which to ask or to act or it is automatically deemed approved. So you have to get it done within a certain period of time.
If I may, Leslie Ellis, what we have seen happen in the past with other 1041 applications is, yes, there have been multiple hearings, oftentimes within a one or two-week period that requires some special meetings or something like that in order to comply with that timeframe. So as that time gets nearer, that would be something that the department could look at and coordinate with you all and the applicant and community members who are interested to be sure that those are mapped out on the calendar.
Reading my mind, that was my question. So, okay. So we are almost out of time and we, so I thought maybe, Frank, did you have other things we could talk about later?
No, I'm just, I'm going to read, double read this statute and make sure I'm getting it all right.
So Rebecca, do you have any other updates?
No, that's it for me.
So Leslie, we have a little bit more time. Do you have any updates?
I don't have anything substantial today other than just as a reminder to everybody that the fair and rodeo are underway, starting with the parade on Saturday, which was a fun event for those who had a chance to participate. And then you'll get some more information yet again about the schedule so that you and the community can be sure to plan their schedule starting on Friday and through the weekend and into Monday and through Wednesday. So exciting time.
Sorry, I can chime in again. We had one item scheduled for next Monday's work session at this time to talk through the code compliance assessment. But because the fair is running through next week, we thought we'd offer to postpone that discussion to a different week, the following week, to open up this time for you all to attend the fair or other things that you may have on your calendar for next week. And I don't believe we have any other items scheduled for the work session. So we could cancel if that's your preference.
Colleagues, would you like to state your preference? Commissioner Stevens?
I would prefer to cancel just because I think that that's when we got invited to sensory day. And so I think that if we wanted to attend that, it would be hard to squeeze both things in. So, and so, yes, that would be helpful, I think.
Commissioner Kofalas.
As much as I am waiting for, in great anticipation for the code compliance update, if I can squeeze in an afternoon nap in preparation for the evening, I'm okay with that.
Thank you for that offer and thinking about our schedule. And I welcome that opportunity so we can get out and, especially since this is an award-winning program that we're doing and I'd love to kind of experience that. So thank you for that. And, but I do know that I'm very interested in the code compliance discussion. Even had it on one of the rock stations, they were talking about code compliance on the DJs. And I was like, what are you talking about this? So I listened and it was very interesting. So on a rock station, I was just blown away. It's like I can't escape code compliance even in the radio. So very, very interesting kind of discussion. So anyway, any other updates? All right, so.
For us, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So at 2:30, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here today and all the updates.